Good. I call to order the Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Workshop Voting Meeting today, Tuesday, May 27th, 2025. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In compliance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, location, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Courier-News and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. May I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Beatty. Ms. Cassell Dunn.
Here.
Dr. Coleman. Dr. Pixley. Ms. Prus.
Here.
Dr. Schoolman. Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Vargman.
Here.
Ms. Voorhees.
Here.
We will now recess to executive session, be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act, NJSA 10:4-12 and 13. The Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss personnel, HIB, and the superintendent's finalization of contract. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10:4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I move that we recess to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now going to reconvene to regular session. Do I have to move that? I move that we reconvene to regular session. May I have?
Second.
Dr. Beatty.
Here.
Ms. Cassell Dunn.
Here.
Dr. Coleman. Dr. Pixley.
Here.
Ms. Prus.
Here.
Dr. Schoolman. Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Vargman.
Here.
Ms. Voorhees.
Here.
I'll stand for the pledge.
I dedicate to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
We had two communications since our last meeting. One regarding the after-school program to keep it in-house and one regarding procedures for leaving early for sports. The next night item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the hybrid workshop voting meeting budget adoption and executive session for May 5th, 2025. I move that we approve those minutes.
Second.
Dr. Beatty.
Yes.
Cassell Dunn.
Yes.
Dr. Pixley.
Yes.
Ms. Prus.
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman. Ms. Daniel. Ms. Vargman.
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees.
Yes.
We have our student representative's reports, but our students are getting awards tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Siska to present their report.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. I'll be half of our students, seven who are getting awards tonight, getting awards. They have some updates. I have nothing from Irving and Bartle. Bartle is drafting up the school year with a float on seventh grade, basically floor of Liberty Science Center. Fourth grade is heading to Liberty Hall and fifth grade district turn from Camp Mason and with a cool off at the Woodbridge YCA's plattab. Field day was a hit for second and third graders and a fourth and fifth will get their turn on May 28th after a rain delay. We're also looking forward to welcoming our new McDolphins from Irving for school visit and celebrating our fifth graders at the moving up ceremony on June 13th. At the middle school, middle school teacher appreciation week. The middle school would like to give a huge thank you to the PTSO for making their this year's teacher appreciation week extra special. The staff had last searching for penmanship to paint and carbon to heal Brady on an adventurous hunt through the school and across Europe. The PTSO was a big help on the days Carmen was causing chaos in China and stirring things up in France. It was a huge success and we're so grateful for your support. So I mean, where the world of carbon saving, maybe you're fans out there, it was really fun to watch. The second ABCs, as the school year winds down, the middle school is turning up the fun with an exciting ABC countdown to celebrate the last 26 days of school. Each day is seen with a letter of the alphabet, bringing smiles to a spirit of community to our halls. We've already here now here on athlete day A, sharpened our strategy during X and O day E and tictact games and showed off our heart and heart of this pride A in full spirit aware. And there's plenty more to look forward to. Students will enjoy a sweet surprise on multi top day L, breaking someone's day on make someone smile day M, get wacky for preposterous haircut day E and share appreciation on thank you day. Keep by recognizing the amazing teachers and staff who make the middle school special. The ABC countdown is a creative and fun and joyful way for our school community to end the year together, one letter at a time. The sixth grade barbecue will happen that is provided by the PTSO on May 27th. The sixth grade teachers then run a field day after lunch filled with games and people activities. Seventh grade field day barbecue is on May 28th for the same. Diversity Day is May 30th. We love Diversity Day. The goal of Diversity Day is to enhance the understanding of each other's differences as well as as well as explore larger issues in the world. Students will have an opportunity to choose from over 30 workshops throughout the day. Workshops in which students will participate include Bollywood dance, fields for peace, American sign language, the multicolored experience for World War II, Model UN, mindfulness and mental health, and Messiah. Thank you to the PTSO for their participation and donations. Doorly Park on June 10th, the eighth grade trip is around the corner. So they're very excited and looking forward to a day of fun. Eighth grade field day is on June 11th. The eighth grade barbecue and dance is due 13th. And eighth grade awards ceremony, moving up ceremony is on June 16th. At the high school, the Highland Park High School, Denco, which is Orlando, Florida, for the International Career Development Conference about two weeks ago. It was a huge success as they engaged in team bonding activities, competed network and so much more. Ms. Turgo and Ms. Pollak are so proud of everything Denco has accomplished this year and cannot wait to see what's to store for all of our students next year. Our music programs are celebrating our incredible students with the choir concert last week on Thursday, the orchestra concert on Wednesday, the 28th, and the band concert on the 29th. Our junior prom and enchanted heat, they was truly enchanting. We hosted it here in our cafeteria on May 17th. On June 4th, we'll celebrate our senior prom. We recently had our fan showcase where we celebrated the stem work of our students in their partnership with Rutgers University. As the spring sports season draws to a close, our teams have put forth strong performances across the board. The Bay's Falcon recently recently celebrated senior night with a win. Oh, so this is here, okay, so. Our softball team compiled some impressive statistics records to secure third place in the DMCs, which has also earned a third place finish and finally tracking field will be well represented at our upcoming group one state championships. Please don't ask any questions, so I don't have any answers, but I have a dirty chance.
Well, Dr. Schoolman will be here shortly. He's running a little late, but he did want to just comment on what a fabulous experience that was had at Camp Mason with the Bartle students and Bartle fifth graders and staff. But I'm sure he'll add some to new business.
Thank you. That concludes the super conference. See, student report, whatever I usually. Okay. All right. All the one more. Well, good evening, everyone. Have lots to talk about tonight. I'm really excited for so two formal presentations and then two introductions. So the first, I would like to have a co-founder of the world citizen presentation. Dr. Cole is at the high school thing, there are seniors getting awards. So he's not with us, but he'll tell me his presentation. But first, I'd like to call off Dr. Reed Duncan from Rutgers University. I think Mr. Carter joining you. Okay. Students, okay, we got a class. I'm very excited. Dr. Duncan from the Rutgers Graduate School of Education, I'm going to pass. Do you want the wireless or are you presenting from the? But so you have to use the microphone here. Yeah. So the people at home can hear you.
All right. This is not too loud, right? Okay. Thank you so much for stopping by. We're really excited to be here. I wanted to tell you just for a few minutes about a project that collaborated project that we had with Rutgers Graduate School of Ed, that includes myself, Dr. Chin, Jamie Lynn, and Ava Lubin, who are graduate students. And we did this in collaboration with Mr. Carter and thank you for allowing us into your classroom. It was really a tremendous experience. So this is what we did. We looked at a locally relevant issue in Highland Park, which is the deer. And if you look in here and find your house and see how the deer are running near, this is about all this from 2019, but this is the sort of data that students were working with. So we picked a locally relevant phenomenon for them to study science and ecology. What is causing the deer overpopulation and how is the overpopulation of deer affecting the environment? Those were the two questions that they were exploring. They used scientific evidence, various kinds of evidence, different kinds of representations, a lot of vans to try and figure out the answer to those questions. And they use a tool, which you call ME, which is a modeling environment where they can create models. And then they have evidence here that they can open and they can link to the models that they create. So this is authentic scientific practice. These are some examples of their sophisticated models that they created. And they also engaged in peer review. So they had to take each other's models, write comments, and then respond to each and every comment and write a letter back to the editor explaining how they addressed these comments and revise their model, which is something that scientists know very well you have to do. But another point is that we wanted to make science consequential. So linking science to what is actually happening in the real world and what is happening in our own world. So this was actually an issue that came up in 2020. There's a lot of discussion about what to do about the deer in Highland Park. So they listened to excerpts from this meeting. And then we started to think about, okay, what can be some mitigation strategies that we can do in Highland Park. They researched some of them, developed arguments about them. And I'm not going to say much because the main event is this incredible video that they created, public service announcement that helps, that we're hoping can help our our own folk figure out what to do with the deer and how to manage the deer content that we have. So without further ado, I'm going to hit play. We will hear from them.
Yes, the ecological threat is actually pointing to a persuade monitor. Do you guys see I require the owner of this 74th year persuade monitor? What are the effects of deer overpopulation? Deer browsing reduces ecological by the person. Here everybody, if you have a question, I'm sorry, of course. This affects the habitat, has a many made of animals, or it's okay, or it's a good place. I'll say also about that. What can we do to prevent deer from getting highly persistent? Deer accounts, deer accounts can help back in deer with our plants. They're going to make a knowledge plan. This is all regardless of who's healthy and safe when deer. I want to give you to the head there is put all that because it helps to our navigate and just let them know that I need to. The final way to combat the deer, then wrestling in the clouds in the mountains is above things for good. Here is the. What they do will come from over a question there for the Republican and law. His focus was the finding of these, because he was impacted. Jersey running plant day, they chose many native plants that have deer resistance. For example, a perennial, luxuriant. Their activity is of collective. If you want to find native plants only, you can find this area that's will give them to only and trust the S. There's also the entrapped water to see how these humans are guarding the forest. This is what I should hope I was studying. We thank you for listening to our presentation.
Thank everyone again, in particular, Mr. Carter and our wonderful seventh graders. It has been an absolute joy. And I want to turn it over to our incredible youth if they would like to say something and if they want to answer any questions.
Um, I don't have much to add on to the presentation, but does anyone have like any current questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So what do you feel like was the most engaging thing about this work that you guys did together?
The most engaging part is probably the problem solving and group work that we had to do. So me, Guadalupe, Guadalupe and Sagan, we were working closely together and we were finding like these resources and like we were finding resources and data to like, kind of like, is what I'm trying to say is it was very fun to like explore like what options we have to deal to deal with deer. And I feel like it was definitely engaging group work.
Thank you.
I have a question. And you might have said this early on, but I'm curious to if the deer density here is different than than other towns. Is that something you looked at?
Because we were basically trying to get a general idea. We didn't really look at like different areas, but yes, there's definitely like because of climate, because of certain climates or certain like certain animals in certain areas, there can be different deer densities. That's. Yeah, it just really depends on the area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much. Anybody else want to say anything before I give up the mic?
It's your last chance.
Thank you so much. And thank you again, Mr. Carter, for letting us into the classroom.
Thank you, Dr. Duncan. Thank you, Mr. Carter. And thank you to our wonderful students that represented for the seventh grade. It sounds like an amazing project. And every day I look outside my office door and there's plenty of deer around and it's glad, I'm very happy to see that this is still of a big concern on trying to help help the population, but also help the community, you know, handle it. So thank you so much for your commitment to the scientific community. And you're all more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. I'm going to call up Ms. Rodriguez next to present on our district performance report, but you're free to go if you have other things to do. No problem. Thank you. All right. So now I'd like to, what happened? No, you can, you want the wireless, it's up to you. You can have the wireless. Oh. Okay. Do you want the wireless or do you want to go to the podium? Yeah, absolutely. Sometimes I have a difficulty when I have multiple things in my hands to get to everything. I know. All right. Well, thank you. Ms. Michelle Rodriguez, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, will now present on the district performance report. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear? Is it good? Yeah. Thank you for having me. So this evening, I'm going to talk a little bit about the 2023, 2024 school performance reports. The reports are compiled by the New Jersey Department of Education. Each year they usually come out in April and they provide the public with a variety of information about each of the school districts in New Jersey as well as information about each of the individual schools. Tonight, I'm going to talk about some of those data points. I just want to remind everyone that this is last year's data, not this year's data. Okay? I think everyone has access to anyone who wants to has access to those slides, correct? So on this slide, you have the link that shows where you can find any performance report in any school in the state of New Jersey. We have downloaded the PDF files for our district report as well as for each individual school in both English and Spanish, and they live on our website, so you can easily find them there. So the report has a lot of information. There are hundreds of data points. Tonight, I'm going to talk about a few of them. So here are some that are included. You have demographics, student growth, student achievement, graduation rates, school accountability information. Tonight, I'm going to start on our enrollment. So our enrollment last year was. Oh, my goodness. Sorry. 1,593 students. Overall, there is a decline in student enrollment if we're looking at the the data for the last three years. With the exception of last year, the high school saw an increase and there was also an increase with the few students at Irving. If I'm mistaken, it's five. What we have seen is across all four schools is an increase in student groups when it comes to students that are economically disadvantaged. We see an increase in that student population as well as students with disabilities. So here for Irving, we see an increase in the past three years of eight and a half percent for economically disadvantaged, 4.6% for students with disabilities. Last year, we saw a 3% decrease in the amount of multilingual learners and a 1% decrease in students experiencing homelessness. For Bartle, we see a decrease of 38 students across the last three years and an increase of 10% for economically disadvantaged, an increase of 6.5% of students with disabilities. At Bartle, we do see an increase of three and a half percent for multilingual learners and a decrease of 1% of students experiencing homelessness in the last year. Middle school also has an increase of 26 students over the last three years, an increase of 11% for economically disadvantaged, six and a half percent of students with disabilities, an increase of 3.6% of student of multilingual learners. And the middle school has a 2.3% of students experiencing homelessness. While it is a small percentage, it is the largest in the four schools. And then the high school, we see an increase in the last three years of 21 students. There is an increase of 5.3% for economically disadvantaged, a decrease of 2% for students with disabilities and a decrease of 1% for students experiencing homelessness. So that's our enrollment and demographics. For the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, which many of our students just finished taking in the last month, the state provides us with data for both achievement as well as student growth. They provide us with the student growth percentile. This percentile is based on the growth that students have shown relative to their academic peers who scored relatively in the same area or range as the year prior. Okay? So the next few slides, you're going to see data for Bartle and middle school because the student growth percentile is for grades four to four to eight in ELA and four to seven for math. So for Bartle, the charts that you see at the top show how we did what our median student percentile growth is. And if you can see, we got two stars for ELA because last year we exceeded the standard for ELA and with an increase of 11% and math also met the standard last year. The two graphs at the bottom show what the growth was for each of the individual grades for fourth and fifth. And as you can see, we show, we showed an increase in both. This is the cohort achievement data. So this is not growth. This is shows the percentage of students who met or exceeded expectations on NJSLA. So this is tracking the cohort. Now I know it's not perfect because we don't necessarily account for students coming in and out, but for the most part. So you can see that the graph on the left is our current fifth graders. So that chart shows how they did in third grade and fourth grade. For ELA, there was an increase in 21 by 21% of students meeting or exceeding. And for math, there was an increase in 9%. For our current sixth graders, which is the chart on the right, their growth from third, fourth, and then fifth grade, for ELA, we saw an increase of 30%. And for math, it stayed relatively the same. Middle school met the standard for both ELA and math last year. The year prior, we did not meet the target for ELA. So, but we did this year. And so that was, we showed a 12% increase. So that was great to see. The charts at the bottom, we see how the growth percentiles for the grade, individual grade levels in ELA, we see consistent growth. In math, we see growth for sixth grade and there was a slight decrease in seventh, but it's in seventh grade, we also have to take into account that some of those students are in algebra, so they don't take the math seven NJSLA test. This is the cohort data. So the chart on the left shows our current seventh graders. So that's how they did in fourth, fifth, and sixth. So we see some increases and some decreases. The charts on the right only show for ELA since in math, the performance reports don't track past the sixth grade in terms of the growth. And so we do see the current eighth graders. We see a little bit of a decrease, but we saw a little bit of an increase last year and the current ninth graders are have increased about 15% in the last three years. So for the every student succeeds act, New Jersey has to have a proficiency rate for our federal accountability. So that's what you see in this chart. You also see at the, in the bottom graph, you see the participation in taking the test for the last three years, our proficiency rate as this, as well as the state rate. The numbers here are a little different than the numbers prior because this one takes into account the DLM, the Dynamic Learning Map Assessment, which is the alternate assessment. So students would not take both. They would either take one or the other. You will notice for Bartle, the participation rate decreased a little bit last year for both ELA and math. We did meet the target for both. We had not met the target the two years prior to the last. So that's wonderful. We're in the right, we're going in the right direction, even though the graph, I know it, the line doesn't look like it's moving much, but we are. The same thing for the middle school. In the middle school case, we, same thing, we didn't meet it the two years prior to last year, but we did meet the target for last year for both ELA and math. And at the middle school, the participation rate in the assessment has gone up. And the high school, same thing, we met the target. Last year, we did not meet the target the previous two years. And if you notice for ELA, there was a big jump. We actually are above the state proficiency for high school. Continuing on with high school data, we have our graduation rates. Students who complete all of their requirements by August 31st of their senior year are considered a graduate and are included in the graduation rate. The class of 2024 had to were required to meet the assessment component of graduation as well. So they had to sit and show proficiency on the NJGPA during their during 11th grade. If they did not meet proficiency, then they had the opportunity to take another assessment or do the portfolio portfolio appeals process. He the the graphs show what our four-year graduation rate looks like and what our five-year graduation rate looks like. We see a slight decrease in our fourth four-year graduation rate by about three and a half percent. I will say that of the 11-ish percent that are not included there, about 5.7% of the students did continue on. So they continued as an enrolled student into their fifth year. This is our federal graduation rate, so they calculated a little differently. They do not include students with disabilities who did not meet all of the graduation requirements because of a modification or an exemption made through their IEP. So if you notice in that rate, we are in line with the state average. This is more high school data. This is our PSAT and SAT performance. It does show that we are above the state average. Our PSAT was taken by our 10th and 11th graders, and we had 100% participation for students taking it. Our SATs, we had 53%, which was higher than I thought, but I know lower than some may have anticipated. And that included, that was just 12 graders. Still should be self-branded. AP exams, this is for any student in 11th and 12th grade. We had a total of 333 exams taken. 304 of them earned at least a three or above, which is 92% of the assessments taken. So that's awesome. And we are above average in the number of students enrolled in AP classes as well as the number of students taking at least one of the exams, since it's not required. And students taking at least one and scoring at least a three or above. Attendance. We all know how important it is to come to school and that research has shown that it's being in school is a huge impact when it comes to student learning. This is our rate of chronic absenteeism. We are way above the state average. We actually showed an increase two years ago, and we had an uptick last year. So the state considers a student to be chronically absent if they are not in school 10% or more days from the time they are enrolled in a given school year. So an average, a school year is 180 days. So if they're absent more than 18 days, they are considered chronically absent. That includes excused absences. Any excuse that's. This rate shows that out of 1,593 students in K-12, 339 of them are chronically absent. It's a lot. We did not meet the target in any student group for attendance. And this is what it looks like by grade level. The only two grades that we are not above the state average is in 11th and 10th grade, which I'm assuming that at that point, lots of conversations are happening about the importance of attendance and graduation requirements. We are above 20% of the grade level in all grades except third, fourth, and 10th grade, and then 11 and 12 where we're below. In all other grades, more than 20% of the grade level is chronically absent. That's a lot. I just encourage as much as possible that all students come to school and then maybe we could see more growth on our achievement data. So as part of New Jersey's Every Student Succeeds Act accountability system, there is a formula that determines a summative score for each of the schools that is based on different factors, and you can see them listed there. So it has to do with the ELA and math state assessment, how much growth we've had, our graduation rate, our progress toward English language proficiency for our multilingual learners, as well as our attendance. And based on that summative score, there are schools that are identified as being comprehensive or targeted for support and improvement. If you remember, last year, our middle school was identified as being a comprehensive support and improvement school, a CSI, which is identifies the Title I school who has not shown improvement for a specific group of students for more than for three or more consecutive years. So the middle school, I know it shows it there, but they were actually identified last year for Black or African-American students. Based on being a comprehensive support school, they're not allowed to exit that status for three years. So no matter what type of growth we made this year or we made last year, they're not eligible for exit until 2027. So. I just wanted to highlight this. This is areas where the different student groups, where the middle school did meet the target for ELA proficiency as well as meet the standard for ELA growth. For math, all all groups met the target for math proficiency at the middle school. So I just wanted to highlight that there is a lot of good happening and a lot of growth, though they, you know, have been identified. What happens next? The school and the all stakeholders, we look at, we assess the needs, we look at the data, we identify what strategies we're going to use to help support the students, identify resources, an annual school plan is created with specific timelines and next steps, and then we follow through with that plan. These are some initial ideas for next steps, some of which have been started already this year, and we plan to continue. Once we look at more of the data for the end of the year and the state assessment data that should be coming in at the beginning sometime in the summer. So things such as PLCs and data-driven instruction, looking at the team meetings and structuring them around identifying needs and targeting intervention, and then coming back and looking at the progress that was made and adjusting from that. Continuing with, I think we mentioned last year, like the NJSLA practice items, intervention, some of the programs there at the bottom that you see, Wise Connection Program, Brothers Mentoring, various school-wide events, just thinking about climate and culture within the building, and then the climate and culture specialists. Those are ideas to potentially continue. We're just waiting for grant funding and crossing our fingers that we can afford these different things. These are just some websites and surveys that anyone is welcome to partake in or look for more information about the different performance reports. Like I said, there's a lot of more information on there. These were just a few of the highlights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. I'll open the floor to the board for questions or comments. Additionally, to the community, the performance reports can be found on the district website. This current performance report and yours past. Questions or comments?
You have a question. So so I just want to clarify for latenesses, three of those do also count as absences, correct? Because I didn't I didn't see it on there. And then so for the chronic absenteeism, do we have a breakdown of demographic of who is chronically late?
No, yeah, yeah.
Yes, 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 we do have it.
Okay.
Yep. And and for that specifically, what we've done in the past too is we've broken that down because we've noticed a significant intake increase in our, for example, McKenney-Bento displaced students. So what we do is we actually take that data and unpack it very granularly because those students often become chronically absent to no fault of of anybody's, just because transportation. So if they move from location to location, transportation takes a couple of days to catch up to them. So automatically, those were a couple of absences. So we and we brought up to 37 or 39 students that were displaced. So that was a significant number impacting us. So we take that into account. Then we look at our students that might be chronically absent because of health-related concerns or school anxiety, if they are classified special ed, looking at Dr. Reese in the audience, and he's nodding his head. So we look at that kind of data and look at the the supports for them. And then from there, we're kind of left with that pocket of students that we can kind of look at and engage based on some demographic information. So that's how we granularly look at that data.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question about the chronic absenteeism. Do we know? Have we compared? My understanding is that walking districts often have a higher rate of chronic absenteeism than bus districts.
Correct.
And I'm wondering, have we compared our absenteeism to other walking districts? And similarly, do we know, is there actually a difference between the students in our district who are bust and who walk? Have we looked and looked at that?
So I tried to look at some of the empirical research that is out there. And so far, the only empirical research that I have access to that I can find is really actually for younger students in primary grades. They do a lot of research in primary grade. And the research does suggest that students that attend districts that are predominantly walking, that don't have transportation, suffer higher levels of chronic absenteeism and attendance rates than districts where they are transported. So the empirical evidence out there does suggest that because that was of concern. I have reached out to local districts that do not provide courtesy transportation, and they are seeing the same, if not more significant numbers. Recently, there were some districts, even so much as per Thamboy, that stopped providing courtesy transportation to their students, and they're seeing a huge increase in chronic absenteeism now as a result. So locally in Middlesex, those that do walk show higher rates of chronic absenteeism. What we can do, what I don't have right now, is that specific data on our bus students versus our walking students for transportation. But we can certainly get that information.
I was just going to say thank you so much for this presentation. And one of the things that, you know, for those listening, there's been a lot of changes. I think it's just how we're tracking this and the conversations that we're having. And even that one bullet about the PLCs and incorporating the data. I think it'd be good for folks to know, I mean, as as we're, you know, we're really using different methodologies to to track this diagnose and and give that intelligence back to the teachers and have those kind of conversations. I think maybe it'd be good to kind of share some of that, even that bullet on what you were saying with data-driven PLCs. I think some folks don't even know what a PLC is, but it's so important in the kind of culture that we're building. So I think that might be useful. If you want to speak to that or not, but I think you're doing really great work, and it'd be nice to share that.
So I'll speak for Ms. Rodriguez, and she doesn't have the microphone, so the people at home can hear. So a PLC is professional learning community, and it's a data-driven work that the teachers do. So in keeping with DeFour's work on PLCs, the idea is to take some piece of of data. So it's whether it's attendance, achievement, behavioral data, discipline data, and the teachers hone in through very specific models that are done where we can drive it through questions that we're asking. So we can use very targeted ways of looking at the data through protocols where it's very granular, looking at the data for whatever their target is, their goal is, looking at that data and tracking that data. So again, whether it's discipline with a group of students, whether it's chronic absenteeism or ELA language, I'll use some examples that Ms. Rodriguez has shared with me where they look at the ELA data from local benchmark assessments and where and the state data and looking at it to say, okay, where are key areas where our students are mostly struggling? And let's unpack that data. Where are we seeing that in our curriculum? Where are we seeing in our assessments? And something so simple as like, you know, students are getting something, a particular standard where they're falling short on. And, you know, we're only spending a small amount of fraction of time versus something we're spending a longer amount of time studying in classes, and how do we adjust that? So that's how granular we can get with that that PLC work and really focusing it. So we don't take that time for faculty meetings or things like that. Instead, we're really using it for targeted data-driven conversations.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
One thing, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on it, because I know we have that comprehensive improvement around Black and African-American students in the middle school. But I also believe on some of the testing that we don't actually have enough African-American students in terms of are they meeting, are they like passing proficiency? So they're they were. I just wanted to say this because when you look at whether or not different suburbs have actually met the target, they're not in there because we don't actually have enough to meet that. At the same time, we've been noted for not serving them. So, yeah, they're not necessarily in there because they haven't met the target.
Correct.
But it's something we still monitor.
Absolutely. And if you look at the full report, Ms. Rodriguez presented a comprehensive overview of the report, but it's very extensive, you know, lots, lots of pages, lots of pages. So please feel free to look at it if you want to look at that data more specifically. It'll note denote in each of there where we don't have enough students, Black or African-American, to meet, to actually signify any data. They make a small group of population for us.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say, one other comment on that is just when you look nationwide in ELA and math, where it's kind of a problem across all states, and to see us hit the mark. And when you look at the segmentation, we're not seeing kind of the danger zone in the way other districts are experiencing. So, you know, I think that is something very notable and reflective of the investments we've been making over the past year or two.
And I just would echo what Sarah and everyone else has said about how hard I know everyone on the administration is working to make improvements. We can see those improvements happening. My question is, I should have asked this committee, but how are the targets determined, right? Because we, I don't think we missed a state target in any ELA or school category. There was all those stars, and in one case, we exceeded it. But I was also struck that if you looked at the compared the 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 percentage meetings on the standard in Bartle or the high school to the to the state, we often fell below the state medium. So I'm wondering how those how those targets were set? And yeah, that's my wonder.
Do you want to?
So in terms of growth, it's 50%. That's the standard. But if you score within 40 to 59.5, you are considered within the standard.
Okay.
When it comes to the federal accountability one, which are the later slides, the New Jersey Department of Education determines the targets. And last year, they actually changed some of the targets. They actually had to lower the targets. And there's a document on their website that actually tells for each individual school what their target is for each student group.
Yeah, I saw one on here. Yeah, I saw one on here where we met this year, but we have a lower percentage. So that explains that.
And it's, the state has a little asterisk because their new targets, from what I read, have not been approved yet, but they're moving forward with them, so.
Thank you.
I had a quick question just about the SAT scores. I know that a lot of the community has been talking about that because we were in the news for doing so well and just wondering about the percentage of kids who took them. But I think the majority, most kids are taking them in eleventh grade, the regular SATs, not twelfth grade. So that, that low percentage could be the kids that are just taking it either late or second, third, fourth time. Wondering if we have the stats on the eleventh graders that took SATs.
I don't have them with me. The performance report, which I'm assuming that's where the article got their data from because it came out right after, only accounts for twelfth graders taking the SATs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I double-checked that.
Um, I had a question about the demographics. Because, so when we were talking about there being an increase in the percentages of special education or economically disadvantaged or at-risk children, I was, I was wondering if that was actually a increase in hard numbers? Or whether the percentage has grown as the enrollment has gone down? If it's the same number of kids?
It's the percentage.
Okay. So it's the same, the number of children has not grown? It's the pious shrunk?
That I would have to double-check.
I'm just wondering, are we, are we serving more at-risk or special education children? Like hard numbers? Or is it a greater percentage of our school population as the enrollment has declined?
I see. Well, you'll have to check. Yeah.
But I mean, if you look across the schools in terms of enrollment, we're talking about like three to five students, right? So we're not talking about a big change. In different schools, you might have a twenty-five student change, but that's like, the high school has gone up and urban's gone up, right? So overall, you're not actually seeing a huge change in enrollment across the district. So then I think that's the kind of question if this is shifting kind of economics for students in our schools or if there's something else going on in terms of students kind of coming into the district or whatnot.
Yeah, I'm just kind of trying to, that's exactly it. Trying to get a feel of what's actually happening.
I'll, I'll look into it and get back to you.
I just want to say thank you. I know that a lot of the chronic absentee data is scary. And that's definitely something that we want to improve. But there is so much evidence of growth here. And I just want to say thank you to, to you and your team and, you know, everybody that's, you know, done this without becoming a drill and kill district, where we can have like that amazing complex task work that we just witnessed earlier with our science teachers. But all, and then have that produce growth through these state assessments. So I'm really appreciative and I think everybody here is as well.
Thank you.
And on that note, one of the things, when you're looking at the PSAT and SAT data, I mean, to have our SAT, our PSAT scores were high with a hundred percent participation. That's really wonderful. And so I was just extraordinarily happy to see that. And just to follow up, do we have any idea? Because going from like ninety percent participation to eighty-two percent participation at Bartle is kind, is really kind of shocking. Do we have any sense of what's going on there?
Nope.
We do not?
Nope.
And these are all active opt-outs? Like, write a letter to opt out of the exam?
Correct. Did we provide the letter this year? Nope, I didn't think so. Nope, I do not provide the letter anymore. And I'm okay with saying that publicly, we do not provide the letter.
I think it's, I think it's significant that the enrollment, the big drop happened after COVID. It was people just sort of panicking and opting because the public schools were closed, you know? Homeschooling, charter schools, private schools. And since then, there's, it's been basically flat. There's been a little bit of noise, but I think we're just trying to dig out from a loss of faith in public education that the whole nation is struggling with. And we're struggling with that too.
We're on a good trajectory.
Yes.
We are. The students and the teachers have been working really, really hard.
And it shows, which is all shown in the data. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Rodriguez, you're of course free to stay for the duration, but feel free to leave whenever, whenever you need to. So I'm excited to wrap up my superintendent report by introducing two incredible administrators that I hope after tonight will be joining this school district. So first, I would like to introduce and bring up Dr. Mark Morlero, who comes to us with a really robust experience. I know that everybody's had a chance to review his resume. So I'd like to invite Dr. M up to the podium to introduce himself.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Dr. Suska. I'm truly honored to stand before you tonight as the new Athletic Programs and Sports Medicine Administrator. First and foremost, again, I want to sincerely thank Dr. Suska, Dr. Donovan, the entire Board of Education for placing their trust in me with this opportunity. I'm incredibly excited to serve this community and build upon the strong foundation and rich history that Highland Park has had for many years. To the Highland Park families, student athletes, coaches and staff, I'm here to listen, collaborate and lead with integrity and purpose. My vision is to help grow a program that not only competes with pride, but develops leaders both on and off the field. And of course, to my wife, who's here with us tonight, your unwavering love and support and belief in me have been my constant motivation and makes everything I do possible. Thank you again for this warm welcome. The spirit and passion you have for your schools are palpable. And I'm thrilled to become a part of it and look forward to all that we will accomplish together. And go Alice.
Thank you. And next, I would like to introduce Dr. Derek Ressa to serve as our interim Executive Director of Personnel and Student Services.
Thank you, Dr. Suska and Board of Education. It is a true honor and privilege to be standing before you. I come just with such excitement and enthusiasm to get started in what I believe is a can be exciting chapter in Highland Park as a public school district. I've been in special education for over twenty years and it has been just an absolute joy and pleasure to, to serve families and communities and really help support our most vulnerable learners. Having been in special, special education and starting as a paraprofessional through my schooling and then coming all the way through with a recent doctor from Roddy University. It's focusing on social-emotional learning. I cannot underscore how important it is, I think it was said this evening, how important, especially post-COVID, that we have to keep in mind the whole child. The making sure that our students are supported not only academically, but socially, emotionally. And I think mental health is also an incredible part of that. But I just wanted to, to again extend my thanks, my appreciation. They couldn't be with me tonight. They're out and about doing sports and other activities. But my wife, my two, two children, my son is a sophomore and my daughter is a seventh grader, out and about doing baseball and softball on a nice spring evening. It was just so amazing to walk up today and I had to pause and really take in the Highlander community, that beautiful sports field and all the activities going on. It's just, it seems, and has been such a warm community. I want to thank the interview committee, Dr. Suska and the team, the Board of Education, for just a warm welcome through the whole interview process. And I am just so thrilled to be here, to get started. And I just look forward to working with everyone to, to, to bring our community forward. And again, thank you so much and I want to wish a wonderful end to the school year. So thank you.
And that concludes my report.
All right, so we're going to move on to our first public comment of the evening. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policy Number Zero One Six Seven establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Is there anybody in person for public comment? Okay, Angelo, how many people do we have online? Okay, is there anybody online for public comment? You can raise your hand and then Angelo will unmute you. And with no hands raised, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move on to board committee reports and recommendations and we'll start with curriculum and instruction.
All right. Curriculum instruction met on May fifteenth. A major topic was the performance report that I just saw presented. I'll note a couple additional things. I think it was pretty clear at Bartle that ELA achievement growth was pretty impressive. Math growth was more kind of steady. And then at the middle school, particularly there seems to be a dip in sixth grade ELA. One of the things we talked about was that there is a pretty big shift in terms of sophistication of standards going from fifth to sixth. And that could be potentially the reason. And then also in seventh grade, there wasn't as much growth, but we also had a lot of turnover with the seventh grade math teachers. And so that was, those were a couple of spots we kind of noted in addition to what everything else was already said. So I won't say anymore on that because we have one presentation on it. I mentioned this at the last meeting, but we received a five-hundred-dollar grant, bookshelf grant to inform families about literacy practices. And the goal is to work in preschool or in kindergarten specifically. We support scheduling and structuring, but the grant actually, they actually provide training. We also talked about two other literacy grants that were available at the state. We don't qualify for the bridge grant because we don't have eighty percent of students that are not proficient. We will be applying to the focus grant with the Department of Education, which will cover costs for universal screener and literacy. So that's something to look for moving forward. We're asking for board approval to provide paid stipends for staff to run the Spanish club. That wouldn't take into effect until the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year because the budget has already been approved for this next school year. We also talked about the job description for Event Monitor. This is not for sporting events. This is actually for events such as new school or choir performances. This would be hourly work for internal candidates who already know the schools and really to create a pool of candidates who can monitor some of those events as, as needed. Really, there, it's about de-escalating situations if they arise. And the administration has talked about different training that can be provided to individuals interested in that. And lastly, we talked about the cell, cellphone survey and policies in the district. Policy revisions are in development and will be shared at our next meeting. But a couple of things to note, there will be a full ban in Bartle and middle school. At the high school, there will be an instructional ban that will allow students for the open campus to bring their cellphones with them. We're still exploring how exactly to store them at the different schools. It looks like possibly pouches at Bartle, could be lockers or the locks, kind of lock pouches. Sorry. Pouches or lockers at middle school and high school, but the shoe racks won't likely be used at Bartle. The policy is going to be somewhat general to allow for the schools to kind of do what is kind of developmentally appropriate and needed at the different schools. But that is something that is coming our way. I talked about field trips, the last one, there's no field trips. Talked about the reading lab and so I'm going to move on to items. So we have approval of field trips. We have one HIB report, approval of summer, summer teaching and reaffirmment. That's the STAR program for the summer. The approval of the MOU with Span Parent Advocacy Network is the bookshelf grant I mentioned. Approval of summer, high school, summer college boot camp. Approval of Middle School Welcome Academy. Approval submission for the 2025 Teacher Climate and Culture Innovation Grant, which is an amount of fifty-three thousand dollars. Approval of the job description, the event monitor that I discussed. Approval of one university graduate for teaching internships. And approval of home instruction for two students. Any questions, discussion?
Equity and Excellence?
So Equity and Excellence met on May fifteenth. And in attendance was myself, Monique and Allison and Dr. Suska. And we discussed the Comprehensive Equity Plan, which is up for final approval for the board. The Equity Plan will include links when sent to the board and state, but not when posted to our webpage. And we, the committee reviewed each section and we are in compliance. And we need to work on communication regarding this plan with staff and families. It's important to note that while we can demonstrate evidence of equity-related policies in all areas covered by the CEP, we still have disproportionately a discipline and under-representation of racialized student groups in advanced classes. Table six?
Yes, there was one, while we're in compliance, there was one section of the Comprehensive Equity Plan that we did want to look for additional evidence of because there was a question of, is it addressing or preventing disparities?
Okay.
So while we are in compliance for addressing disparities, we are looking to see if we have policy that addresses prevention of racial disparities.
Thank you. And then we also discussed that there's a proposed new schedule via high school Spanish club. And, and then we went over the Event Monitor job description, which would be this posted for staff to apply and training would also be required. I discussed the law enforcement policy nine-three-twenty. We discussed a lot of concerns brought to us by community members regarding police and school staff, interrogation of students and parent notification. Regarding police interrogations at schools, these concerns arose from suggested updates to our law enforcement policy and regulation in alignment with the MOA with local law enforcement. And after meeting with Elizabeth Wheel Greenberg, Professor Laura Cohen and Hugh Burton, we asked official firm to address some questions and make recommendations regarding our concerns and we will revisit this next month. And I think that is all we have for that. And then on the agenda, we have, yeah, the only thing we have on the agenda is approval of the 2025, 2028 Comprehensive Equity Plan.
Any questions for Equity and Excellence? Okay, we'll move on to Finance and Facilities.
Either Finance and Facilities met on May thirteenth. It was myself and Anne and Jen and Dr. Suska, Mr. Rosa and John Flanagan joined us. Under Finance, we reviewed some of the action items that we're going to be talking about when I go over the agenda. Professional services, we had some non-public pass-through items on the agenda, we'll go over that. The authorization to use competitive contracting for the before and after care, RFP that we, that is on the agenda this evening as well. Competitive contracting for that means that we will not be awarding to the lowest bidder, but it'll be awarded based on ratings received in the categories that are listed in the RFP for the RFP for after-school program. And it'll be done by an evaluation committee. So we are voting tonight on the authorization to use the process, right? And that's, and that's what's on our agenda. Tuition rates on our agenda, that's set by the state. Tuition rates on our agenda, that's set by the state. The renewal of the Pomtonian contract is also on the agenda and some of those are some of the things that we discussed at our meeting. We continue to review the before and after care program update. We reviewed the financials through the end of April. And concerns that we discussed last month continue to exist. Stat, we looked at the status, the subsidy applications, that process is still moving very slowly. Dr. Suska had met with the county to try to learn more about the process and if there was a way to move it forward more quickly. And there's many challenges to that. As of May thirteenth, we just had eight Bartle students approved for subsidies and ten at Irving. Considering how many students we have in our after school program and how many of them are on low income or free reduced lunches, that's a very small number. You know, maybe it's gone up since then. We also looked at our financials in terms of, on the, on the agenda of finance, health insurance, dental marketing. So there was a meeting that Brown and Brown are insurance marketers. That's the group that helps us get our insurance that put us out on the market. They were, they, they share different dental insurance options for both our HPEA and HPAA. And that is on the agenda, I believe, this evening as well for approval. Ultimately, the, our, our associations will look it over and see what, what makes the most sense for, for their units. We talked a little bit about, we just reviewed the modular classrooms at Irving. And even though this is on the agenda a couple of months ago, in our conversation, we just reviewed the fact that we have an additional two-year lease. And John Flanagan shared that, that box modular is responsive and they do the maintenance. And so that seems to be moving along smoothly. And we continue leasing up a two years on that. Yes, we just reviewed that. We looked at facilities, projects, a lot, a lot going on, all moving along pretty well. Moving up the baseball fields, let's see. Are we talking about the baseball fields? We talked about the moving of the bleachers as John has done and the couple others are going to be moved as well to get better visibility for our, for our parents and families watching the game. We did have a discussion on the issues involved in the frequent community use of our fields. While the baseball field is owned by the district, our football track and field are owned by the community. And there's a lot of use, which is on one hand wonderful, and on the other hand, can be concerning in regards to security and maintenance of the property. So some of this will come back to safety committee for a conversation from a security perspective. And also administration is discussions with the mayor to see what, if we can get some support for better control of access to the facilities. Or predominantly during the school day, this was the conversation. Other conversation was about asbestos, that is, there were some small repairs that need to be made. And John was suggesting that we were looking into more extensive asbestos testing to see which areas, if any, need to be monitored more closely. Otherwise, all our projects are moving along well. Rekeying exterior doors, the Bartle structural walkway, the repair is now kind of is moving forward. Bleachers at Bartle, we're happy to report, but even tonight, somebody said that the foundation of Irving that was repaired to stop the water damage seems to be holding well. So that's awesome. I think that's, I think that's all on agenda minutes. We go over some very long agenda, a lot of, a lot of agenda items here under finance. Try to, try to summarize a bit. We have approval of contractors for professional development. Two of them, just to note, are pass-throughs for non-public, E and F of all those pass-throughs. We had to approve a nurse. Who went to Kent Mason to support our students. There's approval of the bill list and I need to change the number on that. I'm looking at number three. The bills from April 28th through May 27th actually total $3,990,448.63. So we're right on 63 cents, but a little bit off on the earlier numbers. I don't know how you do this. We have our typical approval of our treasurers reports for, this is through the end of March and through the end of April. And the board secretary's reports for that same time period. As well as the certifications that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the year. Your budget transfers for March and April. Some voiding of outstanding checks, travel and reimbursement. What I talked about for the use of competitive contracting for the solicitation of a before and after school program proposals, that's for a vote. We had two additional out of district placements that are listed here and one additional for bedside instruction. Then the tuition for, for some students who are going to attend Highland Park from, from other districts are listed in here on number sixteen. And then there's a whole lot of coordinated transportation for all the, the surround, many of the surrounding districts to try to coordinate transportation through the different ed services commission to hopefully just bring down our, some of our transportation costs. There's number twenty-six is a resolution for the schedule of payments as transfer of taxes that come to the Board of Education. So that's approval for next school year. There's a bid here that we're voting on for cafeteria equipment repairs for Able Mechanical Incorporated. Is a budget transfer for our preschool aid. Through our preschool aid grant. And then approval of some contract renewals. And that's for our bond agents, software information system, right to know. ESS is our, they provide substitute services for us. Our phone monitoring contract, our tier three mental health services that are coming from Rutgers Behavioral Health. The preschool contracted social worker. And then almost at the end here, the, the big one here is on the renewal of our food service management contract with Pomtonian for twenty-five, twenty-six. And this is the tuition rates, number thirty-seven. Those tuition rates are for students who would come into the district and these rates are set by the state. And the last one is the approval of medical prescription and dental plans for the twenty-five to the school years for all of our district employees. That's the agenda. Questions?
Any questions for finance and facilities?
I have, I have some questions about for the authorization to use competitive contracting for the after school program. Is that something that we are like, are there other options or if we do that, are we dead set on like privatizing? Because I have a lot of concerns when it comes to financial and our undocumented students. Cause I know with the licensure, it put a lot of hardship on us. A lot of people were not, like they didn't qualify for it like we thought they would. If it was in-house, would we be able to even subsidize like we were before?
So really great question. So the request for the proposals is just that. So we can request for the proposals. We might not get any. And then, you know, we can figure out the next plan. But if we get some, we will have a committee with multiple stakeholders to review them. At that point, again, you don't have to award one. I would strongly encourage you to, Denise and I did have a conversation with the auditors just today to talk about options because I know there has been communication on what we can and cannot support financially. And again, to reiterate, on a month by month basis, the district cannot subsidize through the operating budget and enterprise fund, which is the aftercare program. It has to be self-sustaining as a parent paid model. In the past, we've had a little bit of leftover money revenue that we've been able to offset in the years that we were in the negative. This year we do not. So we are going to end this year with a significant negative balance as a result of some of our decisions to, to go for the licensure and not for a myriad of reasons. The undocumented students is just a small, that was I think about a couple of students. There's a myriad of reasons why our, our families are not qualifying for that subsidy. So in talking to the auditor, he said that his recommendation is to try to privatize and outsource it is the best recommendation that he could give the Board of Education. Because the ramifications or consequences for doing so are actually unknown. Because it depends on how much you're in the negative. So we do have some revenue that we can use to offset the cost, but it's still going to result in an audit recommendation. To the extent of the recommendation and corrective action plan that we would have to do is unknown. That can include significantly raising rates because what we're finding is that our free and reduced rates are quite low. Our full paying parents have to subsidize the cost. Our free and reduced families are going up. So right now about 60% of the families that take advantage of aftercare are free and reduced lunch. That means that we are putting a ton of weight in the 40% that have to bear the financial costs. What the auditor is saying is that we don't know because if your numbers continue to change and your free and reduce go up, that puts more financial burden. So we don't actually even know how much we even have to raise rates. And then what the audit recommendation will give us in corrective action plan could be pretty significant to the district. That could then in turn potentially hinder our, for lack of a better way to explain it, is, is like a credit approval rating. So Phoenix Advisors is our financial advising company. They give us a credit rating based on those corrective action plans that we get, those audit recommendations. When we're in great financial status, we can borrow money. When we are not good financial status, we cannot borrow money. So it puts us in a hole where we can't get out of financially, that's going to lower, again, for lack of a better way to describe it, our credit rate. And I'm again projecting to 2030 when our bonds are paid off. And we may want to consider a referendum to offset the cost of some significant financial repairs of the maintenance repairs that, that we're seeing accrue in our facilities that's still on our radar. We want to be mindful of that. But also the unknown can be very scary. And since we've, we've gone through many years of trying this, it's been problematic. I will say this, if you read the RFP in detail, and I encourage everybody as a board attachment, please read it. We were very, very mindful and learned a lot from the last time we did this to include making sure that they provide nurse. So their proposal has to include those things. It has to include options to give our families reduced tuition rates. It has to include great enrichment activities, snacks, things like that. So if you read it, in fact, it also includes that our staff have first rate of refusal for those jobs. In fact, I remember last time doing this, every company that gave us a proposal said, we want to hire your people. They know your community. In fact, a lot of them gave proposals on how they would recruit our own community members to work the program. So please read the RFP very carefully. We crafted it intentionally to make sure that we cross every T, dotted every I this time around. I strongly encourage that, that we vote in favor of this tonight, that we really take a good look at the proposals that we get and make a decision that is going to support a program that will help our families in need of childcare before and after school. That does not put the district in a future financial hole more than it will be after this year. Thank you.
Any other questions for finance and facilities?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple more things and if I'm wrong on any of this, please clarify. But I think the issue with licensing program is it actually required more staffing. At the same time, that would, those additional costs were not met by the subsidies. In part because those who qualify for free and reduced lunch more broadly aren't qualifying for those subsidies or are qualifying at such a small percentage. The other piece is that they don't back pay. So if they take two months to approve someone, you have two months of unpaid after school care. So they don't back pay. It's requiring more costs. So I think at, at the very least licensing doesn't, isn't going to work for us because we can't get the subsidies paying quickly enough, back pay, and it's requiring an additional cost. So that just financially doesn't work. And then so we have the RFP out. Another option is to do it in-house, not do licensing. But I think what the superintendent is really recommending is look at the RFP seriously. Hopefully we get some really high quality vendors, I guess, organizations that are interested and then kind of go from there.
Yeah. And in addition, so my recommendation would be after that, if, if we cannot find a great company to, to do this and we're not in favor, that we don't continue with the licensure. We forego the, the, the licensure to get the subsidy. We still have to be a licensed childcare facility. So let me just remind the community at large. When I started in the position, what I uncovered was that we were running a childcare program that wasn't actually accredited, for lack of a better term, wasn't licensed. So regardless of whether you go for the subsidy or not, and if you are running a childcare program, you have to have a license for it. And there are chapter 52 requirements for that licensure. The subsidy component requires more strict requirements. And that got us into a financial hole because we staffed for that, but the windfall of that money didn't come. Like Dr. Beatty said, for a myriad of reasons, including but not limited to that our families, you have to be working in order to qualify. Some of our families do not. You have to work during the time of the program. Some of our families were not. Some of our families do receive free and reduced, free and reduced lunch through a direct certification from Medicaid. I'm getting it right, Medicaid, because their child is significantly, our children are significantly disabled, but they make a significant amount of money, like $110, $150,000 a year. So they don't qualify for the subsidy, but they qualify as free and reduced lunch. So they were getting our reduced rates, our free. So if you look at the proposal, you'll see our, our rates are very nominal for our free and reduced lunch families, but they weren't qualifying. If they're undocumented, they don't, we don't send them through. And then also our McKenna Bento students automatically are free. Our displaced students are automatically free. So it was a bunch of reasons. In addition, when I spoke to them, one of the most alarming things about childcare solutions is that their needle always changes. So every month they could actually change their requirements and we just don't know. So when I was asking a lot of questions, they're like, well, we just don't know that could change. Yes, for now, but we just don't know. Yes, for now, but we just don't know. So it, I, after an hour, my head was hurting really bad because it was the most ridiculous conversation I've ever had. That I can now understand why our families and, and Mr. McIntosh was running in circles with this. So it was a lot. So my recommendation is the RFP, if we can find a great company that meets all of our requirements, that is my recommendation. If we do not find a company that can meet our qualifications, then we will still have to be a licensed childcare facility, but not as strict. Because I would say, let's forego the license, the subsidy part of it. We still might have to raise rates, given that we were in the hole. And we'd have to work with the auditors pretty carefully because what I don't know, because I'm not in the business of a childcare institute. I'm in business of pre-K through 12 education, is trying to figure out predicting that needle of how many families that are free and reduced are going to qualify to then charging our full paying parents more to offset that. So that's what we're going to have to figure out how to do very carefully to not put the district in a significant financial hole.
I think if I can just, just add that over the last few years, as we've, as we've kind of battled with this back and forth and now tried this for two years. I think the bottom line is that it's, it's a tremendous drain on our administration. We tried this, you know, tried the last two years by bringing on director and, and so forth to try to get off the plate. Cause we, our administration needs to focus on all of our other goals, right? Technically, after school is not a mandated program, technically it's not a mandated program. We don't get a performance report audit. We don't, you know, so the, and it's not in our strategic plan and all that. So I think that anything that we can do to continue to run a program, not question that these parents have, but not to have it be a drain financially for sure, but also time and resources from our district. So I mean, I really hope that we get some good proposals and we can move this on to a professional group that does this for a living. And we can do what we do for, you know, what our administration is supposed to be doing for a living. So that's just my comment on it.
Yeah, just to follow on that. And now I was in the audience, the room was split, but I was in the audience last time when the, the proposals were considered to, to find a vendor. And it was a long meeting, one of those long meetings and the board recessed a second time to talk about it more after hearing what the community felt. They wanted it kept in-house. And then they came back and the board administration said, okay, we'll give that a try. We'll really try. And, and they did. And I've, and it's, it has, I really feel like we've given it our best shot. And it just is very hard to make work for all the reasons we've heard about today. So it's, it's not for, seriously, anyone out there watching. seriously, anyone out there watching, it's not for one of trying or wanting to really make it work and but I think it's just, we're just running up against the limits of what this district might be able to do on its own. I think asking for help is a good idea and hopefully that'll that'll work out.
I have a very boring thing to bring up. There's a tiny typo in one of these on number twenty-six. The last date has the wrong year. Again, it's very little. I just wanted to bring it up in case something has to be changed before we can vote on it. I don't know. Very tiny.
Six eleven twenty-six.
It's a read it.
June eleven twenty-six.
Any other questions for finance and facilities? All right, I'm going to go through personnel. We have the approval of our School Business Administrator, Board Secretary for our District, Mr. Rosa. We have the ratification of the contract with Highland Park Administrations Associate Administrators Association, which will run from July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. We have the approval of the Representative Assembly for Educational Commission Service Commission of New Jersey. That is Dr. Suska. She represents Highland Park and serves on that board. So thank you very much. Approval for non-renewal and reduction of force for the after-school program for one employee. Approval of three leaves of the absences. Approval of resignations, Arlington Burrell from the Site Assistant After School Program. Bartle only. Susan Odato, also after school. Thomas Golean for tech. Just a revised date for Ms. Teacher, who will be staying on until the thirtieth of June. Ms. Koval from Irving Primary and Tashawn Huskins as a para. Approval of appointments as listed. There are many of them. We have some help for senior academic credit restoration. We have some help for SEL Family Night at the middle school. Yay SEL, get a shout out again. Social work interns for the teen center. Mark Mortarello, our Athletics Programs and Sports Medicine Administrator. Derek Ressa, our Interim Executive Director of Personnel and Student Services. And Christine Kent Sharma, who will be joining us for Supervisor of Accounting. So bringing payroll back in district. Thank you. Approval of transfers. There are transfers as listed. I'm not going to go through each one, but you can see the staff member and where they are moving to. And these are all for September. They're not transfers for right now. Number nine is the approval for staff that are teaching our STAR program. That's the Extended School Year Program. So you can see those staff members listed for quite some time here in this agenda. And then we have number ten is a toileting stipend for Power Professionals Working STAR. We have approval for summer staff and ESL screening. Approval for nursing staff for the summer. We have approval for the Child Study Team Testing and IEP Meetings for the summer. And that is all for personnel. Any questions? Okay. And then we have policy. There's policies for second reading, public and executive sessions, remote participation. And that's that for policy. And like we said, the policy, well, not too much of the policy for cell phones is going to change. It's more the regulations. So we'll be looking at that in committees this month and those will be on the June agenda for first read. Okay, now, second public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policy Number Zero One Six Seven establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Is there anybody in person for public comment?
We just talked to the podium.
So the podium, name.
Sorry, Dr. Duncan.
Hi, my name is Ree Duncan and I live on Lawrence Ave, Highland Park. I'm curious about the cellphone policy with the pouches. Are these the yonder bag things that lock?
Yeah, that's one thing that's being considered. The other option are these lockers that are much cheaper. So you can actually slide them in and then pull them out either at the end of instruction.
Yeah, I would love you for that.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in person? Okay, Angelo, how many people do we have online? Okay, anybody online for public comment? Please raise your hand and Angelo will assist. Okay, and with no hands raised, we're going to close, close, close public comment. All right, we'll move to action items. So, oh, wait. Action items, and then we go to the, okay, fifteen, right? Oh, I do fifteen first. Okay, before we go to board action items, we do have some resolutions to move. These are standard pretty much every year in terms of assigning roles and responsibilities. So number fifteen is all those resolutions for Denise DeRosa to be our purchasing agent, following organizations to provide services for staff. The approval for the use of the state bids and contracts for goods and services. The approval for participation in purchasing cooperatives and bidding programs as listed. The authorization for the district to purchase certain goods from the Federal General Services Administration. A warding insurance broker proposals. And then, oh, boy. This one is to that we have completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification that certifies that no reportable contributions to a political or candidate candidate committee in Highland Park Board of Education in the previous year. So no one gave us money. Okay, and then we have professional services, legal services from Bush Law, auditing services from BKC, CPASPC, Bond Counsel for Walens Goldman and Spitzer. And then architectural services from DMR and Spitzel. So that's fifteen. So I move fifteen. Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Sardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
All right. Now we have more board appointments. Number sixteen. Denise DeRosa as Secretary for the Board, School Funds Investor, Brian Falkowski as Treasurer of School Monies, Dr. Richardson and Mr. Rosa as Affirmative Action and Public Agency Compliance Officers for Business Operations. To be Determined for Athletic Programs and Sports Medicine Administrator and Five-O-four Compliance Coordinator. Ms. Asamoah for Supervisor of Counseling, Health and Wellness. She'll be the district's Five-O-four Compliance Officer as well. Amy Capola, District's Homeless Liaison and Educational Sustainability Liaison and English as a Second Language Program Officer. To be Determined for the District ADA Officer and the same thing for Title Nine. John Flanagan, a lot of responsibilities. Denise for OSHA. More TBD Gender Equity Officers and ESL Officers. Ms. Baldazone and Ms. Young to be district to school safety specialists and then District Anti-Bullying Coordinator. Ms. Maiden and Ms. Furdstat at Bartle to be the Anti-Bullying Specialists. Whoever comes into the Guidance Council position at middle school will likely be appointed as the Anti-Bullying Specialist for Middle School to be determined. Dana Sullivan and Melissa Hayes for Anti-Bullying Specialists at High School. Robert Maruca for Anti-Bullying Specialists at Irving Primary. The Rutgers State University, Robert Wood Johnson Medical School, Department of Family Medicine and Community Health will be the school physicians. Mr. Rosa for the Open Public Records Act Officer and Custodian of School Records. And then Vanessa Angen Breslin to be the AHRRA Designated Person of Record.
Second.
I I move sixteen.
Okay, Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Salvin?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Sardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, board action items.
For curriculum instruction, I move items one through ten.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Sardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, Equity and Excellence?
For Equity and Excellence, I move that were approved for the approval of the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight Comprehensive Equity Plan.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Sardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Finance and Facilities?
I move items one through thirty-eight, but there's two write-ins. One is on number three. The amount of the bill list is what I said before, three million, nine hundred ninety thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. And what Jen caught was the number thirty-eight or something.
Number twenty-six.
Oh, twenty-six. Yes, the date, the date on the last one of number twenty-six, six twelve twenty-six.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Sardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
And for Personnel, I move numbers one through thirteen.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Sardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
I would just like to stop and congratulate Dr. Mortelero and Dr. Ressa. And if you just don't mind, I have some small gifts with like people.
I'll hold my one policy for you.
And you're both more than welcome to stay for the duration of the meeting, but I know you probably had long days, so feel free to leave if you would like. Thank you.
And for policy, I move number one.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Sardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to board liaison reports. Any reports?
I I I was going to do for CPAC. So they have their fundraiser on June thirteenth starting at five thirty. It's at Pino's. It is an awesome, awesome event. And, you know, it's very, you know, family friendly. They've got the video games and it's a great, they can live music. And so there'll be some more flyers about that, but I definitely encourage you all to go. It's a really, really wonderful time. That's what I have.
And then for Human Relations Commission, I just want to remind everybody that there are three flag raising events scheduled for June. Wednesday, June fourth, the Human Relations Commission is hosting the Annual Caribbean American Heritage Month Flag Raising Event at six PM at the Community Center. Wednesday, June eleventh, Highland Park will celebrate Pride Month. The celebration will kick off at five PM at the Highland Park Community Center. And the Human Relations Commission's annual pride flag raising ceremony will be at six PM. There will be a lineup of speakers such as Mayor Elsie Foster, study from the PCNJ, Melena Squick Corani, I am so sorry for butchering her name, from the Highland Park Public Library, and Unisha Tucker from the Rutgers Center for Social Justice, Education, LGBT, LGBT Communities. And June nineteenth is the Juneteenth Flag Raising Event at five PM at the Community Center. And everyone is welcome to come show your support and enjoy the festivities.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to flag that the HP Boosters Designer Bag Trivia Night is going to be on Sunday. It has been bingo in the past, but it is trivia at Pino's at five o'clock. So buy a table and come do trivia and support our sports teams.
Okay. For our President's Report tonight, Mr. Rosa sent out this, what do we call this? A notice, public notice. So I'm going to, what is it, last week, the week before? Last week. So as I'm just going to read the important parts. Whereas Section Five of the Act amended for NJSA eighteen colon A. I'm sorry, eighteen A, colon eleven to eleven, requires Boards of Education to provide public notice thirty days prior to renegotiation, extension, amendment, or alteration of an employment contract with the Superintendent of Schools. And whereas the Highland Park Board of Education intends to take action to amend and or alter the contract terms and conditions of the Superintendent of Schools, now therefore notices hereby given that in accordance with the Act, the us, HP BOE, will hold a public hearing on the employment contract of Superintendent of Schools on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at six PM during its regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting to be held here at the middle school, three thirty, Wayne Street. It is the intent of the Board of Education to take formal action on said employment contract at this meeting. Members of the public are invited to submit public comments regarding the proposed amendment and or alteration of the Superintendent's employment contract. The Board pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B, the Open Public Meetings Act, shall not publicly discuss personnel matters and shall not respond to comments made by members of the public. Please be aware that the subject of the hearing retains the rights of privacy and shall retain all rights regarding defamation and slander according to the laws of New Jersey. The Board shall not be held liable by comments made by the members of the public. Okay, so at the June twenty-third meeting, there will be the hearing on the Superintendent's contract. The contract will be released publicly in the agenda attachments. So you may review the contract prior to the meeting. I just want to make also a side note that we know that a local school district made a decision regarding their LGBTQ plus policy, and I'm sorry, their transgender student policy. And we just wanted to reiterate that our transgender student policy remains in effect and this board has no intention of changing that. And we'll do everything within our legal policy to, within our legal power, to make sure that our policies uphold our values. Okay, any old business? Any new business?
Wanted to say something. I'm sorry I came, I'm sorry I came a bit late. Somebody missed a student representative. So I had the great privilege, somewhat exhausting privilege, but it was a great one, to be a chaperone to the Bartle fifth graders field trip to Camp Mason. They had three days and two nights. And they were fabulous. It was so cool to see. I mean, you see your own kids and their friends, but every day, every week, but I it was just amazing to see the whole grade just crushing it on all the ropes courses and and, you know, the heights and just supporting each other. Urging each other on, encouraging each other at the camp meals, you know, just, it was sort of raucous in an appropriate way, just fun, a lot of chatting, sitting and, you know, talking with your friends and they were just, it did such great credit to the Highland Park School District. I really, really mean that. And I talked a bit with the with the with the Director of Activities and he said, you know, all the staff, those the other schools there at the time, you know, all the staff, they that wasn't assigned to Bartle, they're like, jeez, we really wish we were with Bartle. They are. They are, I'm serious, they are the best. And when, when we get on the buses and pulling away, he says, you just have a blessed fifth grade. And I say, I agree, it was amazing. So, and, and actually students, I mean, it was amazing, all the teachers that showed up and stayed overnight, two nights, the, you know, the staff and the paras and administrators, who just made it a great experience for all the kids. So we can all be really proud of the, just the image that we're put forward. Thanks, yes.
Just to follow up on that, because the, I think this trip is so important and I know an extraordinary amount of work goes into it, from the logistics and the planning and the school nurse and the teachers and chaperones and just all of it is a huge undertaking. And I'm just so extraordinarily grateful, you know, that, that we do this for the kids because it is such an extraordinary experience, you know, we had reviews in our house. Another thing just to point out is that this trip was endangered this year because we did lose a large funding source that we'd previously had. It's part of why we went to Camp Mason instead of Camp Bernie this year is because, in an attempt to reduce the cost. But so this was also, it was funded almost entirely by the PTO and their extraordinary fundraising and the extraordinary work that they did this year to allow it to happen. And this is just a reminder that, you know, we really, I think it's a very important tradition and opportunity for kids and we should, we need to keep it going. And that means, you know, identifying funding sources and helping the PTO and volunteering and giving so that all kids get to experience this in the future.
Okay, any other new business? All right, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?